It's 10 o'clock. We'll, we'll actually wait a minute or two to give our stragglers time to get in. We had, I think, 50 people sign up and we have 21 in attendance. So we'll, we'll give it a minute or two here. I want to thank you all for showing up and I can tell you that last time we had plenty of time for comments at the end. So this, the late start won't present a problem. Okay, it is, it's two minutes past. As I said, we had 50, 50 some odd people sign up. So we're at 26. I'd expect some people to be joining us. I want to thank you all for taking time on your Friday to attend this public hearing. My name's Dwayne Lavangi. I'm the program manager for Mass D E P's water management program. And I am accompanied here by several staff members, Beth McCann, who's shown, and Lynn Junior Yao, who is attending. They will help me proceed on track here. If you have any questions, please put them in the chat or raise your hand. The way this is going to begin is I'm going to kind of do a, a brief presentation on the regs. And then we are really going to open it up for comment from the audience, those attending today. This is the second of the two public hearings. We have scheduled for this reg change. The first was on July 7th. The public comment period closes on July 26th. So, you know, we're, we're right in the middle of it. And we look forward to hearing from you and receiving your public comment. With that, I'm going to go to the presentation. Which sure enough isn't showing up on my screen. So give me a moment here. Beth, can you see it?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Let me go to the slideshow presentation format. Okay. So in our, briefly went over some of our rules here today. Everyone should sign in. You all seem to have done a good job doing that. You should be submitting comment verbally here today. If you didn't notice, this meeting is being recorded. So please note that. Raise your hand or raise the, the hand feature or put your comments in the chat and we will get to those. The order in which we're going to do comments, we respect and would like to have our public officials, elected public officials have an opportunity to go first. Then we will pick, I will pick questions from the audience as we go through the, the chat and as people raise their hands. And finally, if we have any people calling in, phone callers, they don't have the opportunity to raise their hand, we will give them an opportunity at the end. This is not a question and answer period. This is a public comment period. So this is an opportunity for those in attendance to express their point of view, offer comments, and hopefully follow those up with written comment as well. So we are currently in the registration renewal process. That began earlier this year when we mailed out correspondence to all of our registrants informing them that their registration was set to expire at the end of this calendar year. There was a, there's a opportunity to request to renew a registration six months prior, which was June 30th. And as you can see, the breaking news with the COVID order, our attorneys reviewed it and consulted with the Attorney General's Office and the registrations are now extended by 462 days, which puts the expiration date not December 31st of this year, but April 7th of 2023. They will expire, the renewed ones will expire on April 7th, 2033. So we will, the opportunity to file renewal requests is also extended out till October of 2022. Those who did file a registration, we will hold on to those and begin review, reviewing them and be in touch should we have any questions. But all of the registrants who filed already, you're ahead of the game, you have more time and we will use the additional time to track those who may not have filed by the, the original deadline. So the, the link here to the registrations is, as I'm sure most, if not all, have reviewed the registrations, the draft regulation changes that we have out is to condition registrations. And historically, the registrations have had really only three requirements that the registrants meter or accurately record or estimate their water use, that they calibrate whatever meters they have and that they record and report that information to us annually. So the conditions we're talking about are changing that to, which we'll get into. In 2008, we were renewing registrations at that point and we included conditions in those registrations that required folks to meet a performance standard of 65 gallons per person per day or 10% or less on account of four, and that they have a summer demand management plan that restricted water use during periods of declared drought. These conditions were appealed to the state Supreme Judicial Court and they came out with the decision, a Ferry Haven decision in 2010 that we believe allowed the department to do so to condition registrations, provided we went through a regulatory process, which is where we are today. The Permit Extension Act, which was, came about in 2008, well, came out in 2010, extended many of our permits, including our registrations, extended out the 2017 deadline that we originally had, extended it out to 2021. And now we're extended again by the COVID order. So the question becomes, well, you know, why are we conditioning registrations? One of those is to provide some consistency during periods of drought. And I put this map up, this was in, you know, the drought we were experiencing last summer. We have a wide range of stat, you know, a wide range of conditions being applied in, across Massachusetts. This map reflects that in the various colors with, you know, a yellow being someone who's doing a voluntary registration to an orange, who somebody's doing two days or less. And then the darker orange is one day or less. And we have our emergency requirements in there and a few systems that had emergency declaration. You'll see many systems that are white. They may not have public water systems or they're consecutive systems of another system, or the grays who just are very, very small towns without a major public water system regulated by the Water Management Act. So we believe that providing some consistency during periods of drought on how water is used for non-essential uses is a part of our rationale for conditioning registrations at this point in time. I'm reflecting this slide primarily to show that water use goes up. It goes up in the summer, whether you're Lynn or whether you're Manchester. We're not universally applying what a summer to winter ratio would be, but we're saying water use goes up in the summertime. And what our intent is, is to try to curb that increase during periods of drought. So the values reflected in here are what the average summer to winter ratios. So the five months, May through September, to five months, November through March with April and October being kind of transitional months. We didn't put those into the calculation. So a comparison of the average over 2009 to 2020 for the, all the systems. And you can see the box to the left, you can see a number of registered only systems with a range of values. And you can see the other noteworthy ones I put on Amherst, again, to drive home the point that Amherst, which is a community that probably loses a pretty significant number of users in the summertime, still has an increase in the summertime. Boston, obviously, people always have an interest what their numbers are. Worcester being a major city as well. I put them on there. Newton, a big residential suburb, you can see their values. And then you can see what our state average is for all the public water systems we have regulated under the Water Management Act. And then our registered only systems. These numbers do not include the Cape and Islands where you would see values that would dwarf Manchester's because this is so, such an influx of people in the summertime. So these averages, either the state or the registered only values, do not reflect those on the, the Cape and Island. So the regulation changes, which I'm sure you all have had an opportunity to review. We, they're very limited. They are limited to two definitions were added to the regulations. One on defining a multi-year drought for a potential exclusion for a major surface water only system, registered system, who has three years of drought storage. They have an opportunity to get a drought management plan that allows them to deviate from the restriction requirements. And then 36.07, we spell out the conditions that would be applied to public water systems and golf courses, both of whom we identify that there's a, a non-essential use to their summer water use. And we provide that potential alternative plan for surface water suppliers. We put some implementation and reporting measures in there. And then in 3643, there's just some general cleanup of our regulatory authority in, in that condition. So, you know, the, the values I showed previously on the summer to winter ratio was year in and year out. That is not what we're talking about. What we are talking about is conditions during droughts. And this is our drought frequency based on a review of the drought plan that D C R prepared and the Water Resource Commission approved. You can see the frequency analysis that a level one drought is less than 30% or equal to, less than or equal to 30% of the time. And down to 20% of the time. And you can see the various frequencies of a level two, three and four drought with a level four being equal to or less than 2% of the time. So we are not saying every summer, particularly thinking of a summer like this where our droughts are, the drought designations are dropping out and we're in flood rules. There would be no requirements, at least moving forward in a year like this. So it's not all the time. In fact, it's not, it's roughly 30% or less of the time what we're talking about. The conditions would apply. The conditions would apply, it would be based on the drought designation for the region in which the water withdrawal sources are, are existing in. So this is our drought regions. We have seven drought regions, starting with the Berkshire region in the West, the Connecticut River region, central region, northeast, southeast Cape, and then the island region. So it is not a one size fits all. If, if the state, it's not one designation by the state. It is, we could very well have the Berkshires being in a drought and the Cape and Islands not being in a drought. So it would not apply statewide unless each individual region tripped the threshold. So what, what are we applying? What we are trying to do is make the drought conditions consistent with what the current state drought plan says regarding non-essential uses. Those are outlined in the button box at the bottom. So in a level one drought, it would be one day a week of watering be allowed before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. And we have more detail in the regulations. You'll need to read those details. It's, you know, there is allowances for, you know, we define non-essential. Those definitions allow hand watering. They allow drip irrigation. They allow watering vegetable gardens. So, you know, all of those details are obviously not reflected in what's allowed in this slide. But as a general rule, the level ones, one day per week. The level two is handheld, watering cans only, again, trying to put those outside the nine to five when in the middle of the day it's least efficient. And at levels three and four, we would ban non-essential outside uses. That, that is kind of the slide I just went over was the public water supply slide. This is more the description of the golf slides. So in the golf slides, it, the driver, as you can see, is the drought level, again, on the left-hand side of the box. Ts and greens are necessary components of a golf course. Greens in particular would dry out if they're not watered and you would have a major problem. So at least a level one to three greens are essential. And then working towards the right of the slide, the fairways, the roughs and the landscape and ornamentals, you can see in the yellow shading how those reductions would be expected. Each golf course will have an opportunity to develop a plan of, of their choice. And there is a time plan. So if you were watering 100 minutes, your irrigation cycles 100 minutes at a level one drought, they would be irrigating their fairways 80 minutes, their roughs 50 minutes, and their landscape and ornamentals would be zero, with the exception of a facility who may have a banquet facility, flowers and gardens for weddings and photos, handheld and drip irrigation is allowed in those kind of facilities. At level two, you see a reduction in the fairways down to 60%. The roughs are down to zero. And again, the landscape and ornamental. So that, that's how the timing would work. An alternative approach they could provide was if they were irrigating 100 acres, that 100 acres would become 80 acres of fairway, 50 acres of rough and zero of landscape ornamental. And in the third option, if they can come up with another plan, which may be a mix of something like that, we could review and potentially approve a plan of that type. So this is a summary of who is registered only. Those are the blues. Those with permits are in gray and people buying water off another system are in green. So you can see the M W R A system is pretty clearly identified in the center. You know, the Boston region and some other suburbs, they're, they're outlined actually in the dark blues. So we have roughly 63 public water systems that are registered only at this point in time. You can see the regional breakout with, you know, southeastern Mass having few. And I would attribute that to growth. They've had a lot of growth in southeastern Mass. And therefore they, they just couldn't live with their registered volume. So many of them had to get permits. And then the other regions, they either haven't had the growth or we have fairly number, large number of cities who may not have experienced growth or reduced water use in some way. So this is the, kind of the summary of who would most directly be impacted by this registration conditioning. Another frequently asked question is, you know, how is our water allocated in Massachusetts? And, and this is the summary as of June of 2019. You can see the top row is the public water systems. We have 799 million gallons a day allocated through public water systems. That includes permatees who have registrations as well. It also includes the 63 registered only systems. The permitted volume, the 127 is obviously the 181 permatees for a total allocation of 926 million gallons, which is 70, almost 72% of our water statewide is allocated to public water systems. And then you can see similar breakouts for other use types. These are, you know, the main use types that we, we grouped agricultural, cranberry, golf, a big other category which reflects a whole, you know, industrial users and includes ski areas, maybe some turf. Actually, I don't think we have any turf facilities at this point in time. Fish hatcheries. So there's a fair number of others. We can see that's over 17% of our water use. So this is how the water is currently allocated through registrations and permits. And you can see most of our water is allocated through registered volume. So where are we now and where are we moving forward in this regulation change? So we had stakeholder input. We had two meetings in January, a meeting in January, a meeting in February. We, we went over details of what we're talking about today, got feedback from that group. The public comment period is open from June 11th to the 26th, the 26th is a Monday. So you want to get your comments in by Monday, July 26th. We're in the second of our two public hearings. I presented to the Water Resources Commission last week. And we are still, even with the extension, our plan at this point in time is to continue on with this regulation change. We hope to meet with the Water Resources Commission in the fall. Usually there's a presentation, a draft presentation, and then a final vote and approval. So some point this fall is our schedule for that with the idea that hopefully in November and December, we have final regulations. As I stated at the beginning, these regulations are, the, they're sorry, the rig, the registrations are extended to to what is now going to be April of, April 7th, 2023. We did get all the renewal requests. You see a brief summary of where we are. We, 92% of the non-cranberry folks filed renewal requests, 83% of the cranberry folks filed. And now they, those remaining eight and 17% have an opportunity to get those documents in by October of 2022. So I, that pretty much concludes my presentation. Here is how you can view the regulations if you have not, where to submit the written comments. And if you, you can also submit paper comments, send them into our office in Boston. And we are going in and checking those on occasion. And you, questions can be directed to me here today, although I'm sorry. This isn't really a question and answer period. I can't answer some of your questions. I'm not here to debate the, the proposed regulation change. But if I can clarify anything, I'm happy to do that today. If you want to give me a call and talk to me, there's my phone number or email me as well. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing and turn the, turn the meeting over to you folks. What I'd like to do first is take those folks who are elected officials and give them an opportunity to provide any comment they would like. And I don't know if anyone's, I see some comments in the chat. Do we have an elected official who would like to go first? Okay, Carrie Mackin?
Hi, Carrie Mackin, select board member in water and we sort of commissioner and in the town of Ipswich, Mass. And former executive director of the Ipswich River Watershed Association. So I'm also on a climate resiliency committee. So I want to point out that it's, it's quite necessary to impose regulations on the registered withdrawals in part because they are a major source of the withdrawals that impact the rivers and other surface waters and groundwater of the state. And the state is supposed to adopt principles, policies and guidelines that are designed to protect the natural environment of the water of the Commonwealth. So this is a step forward in that direction, which is beneficial. I'll also mention that I've spoken to elected officials in numerous other communities in this region, including headwater communities in the Ipswich River Watershed and several upstream of us. And they're all in support of the idea of imposing these regulations. And I'll also make a reminder that section four of the Water Management Acts is that the department made by regulation established for any particular water source, a lower threshold volume basically upon findings that such water sources in need of special protection because of the nature or volume of demands made upon it, et cetera. So I would also urge you to move in that direction on this. But this is a step in the right direction and I appreciate the fact that it's moving forward and I hope it will be adopted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we are trying, sorry, in the chat. Okay, Beth, you got that in there, the link to the reg changes. So we have put a link to those in the, in the chat room. Other, other elected officials who would like an opportunity to, I see Mr. Gottlieb has his hand raised. Go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you, Dwight. My name's Andrew Gottlieb, the Massey Selectman and the Executive Director of the Association of Preserved Cape Cod. I want to commend the department for taking this step to move these regulations this far. I think that your authority is clear and I think the underlying logic behind having some consistency in minimal expectations about water system and registrant response to overall public concern around drought are eminently reasonable. I think that the proposal you put forward frankly is the minimum that should be considered. That it's a very modest step, long overdue, clearly within your authority. I think a lot of the issues that have been raised are secondary and tangential to to this, to the issue of having consistent drought response. I remind everybody that the resources under regulation by the act are common public resources. They serve a multitude of functions, of which water supply is one very important, but not the sole one. The department's been put in by the statute, the difficult position of balancing a variety of interests. And the reality is that most of the interests that you're trying to balance don't have a voice for themselves. And they don't get the attention or make the noise that the more intensive users of those water resources do. And it's our collective obligation to ensure that you continue to put forward a balanced program that provides long-term stability of the resources, both for those that are using it for water supply purposes or other commercial purposes, but also for the natural resources to rely on availability of increasingly scarce water resources where there is ongoing competition and multiple demand. So I think you need to move forward with these. I think they're long overdue. And I would urge the department to not allow this minimalist approach to get nickels and dimed away during the regulation comment process. You've struck the initial right balance. This is a start, not the end. And fully support your intention to move forward with this in a timely manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. Please drop your hand if you get a chance to do that. For those who may want to comment, again, I'm going to just say that we, we're going to take everybody's comment. But you may be able to go back again at the end. I'd like everybody's comments to be limited to roughly two minutes. I don't want anyone to take the floor entirely. So we may ask people to step aside at some point and then give you an opportunity to come back at the end if, if need be. Are there any other elected officials in the audience who would like to have an opportunity to say something? Not to say you don't, if we move by you at this point, but I want to give you that opportunity. Sure, if somebody in the chat are raising their hand. I don't, I don't see anyone. Okay, I'll open it up to the general floor here. Are there others? With the hand, I see Patrick Karen with a hand raised. So Patrick, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you. As noted, my name is Patrick Karen. The, I'm the executive director at the Mystic River Watershed Association. We are an environmental advocacy organization working on behalf of the residents for a healthy and resilient watershed just north of Boston. We also represent thousands of people across these 21 communities who are active in the organization, whether they're out trying to recreate or value sort of the ecosystem services. While we have a significant number of communities that are benefiting from the M W R A system, we also have multiple communities who are registered users in our system and they are impacting our rivers and lakes and impacting And they are impacting our rivers and lakes and impacting our river herring populations and American eel. Briefly, I'll note that we are in strong support of the proposed regulations. Non-essential water use, the application of water for basically aesthetics in many cases is causing damage to our local streams and ecosystems. It's also a runaway system where the tiered cost structure is really the driver for perhaps holding back some of the necessary mitigation that we need to do to protect these streams. I'll note that the drought management plan updated in 2019 really requires these regulations to move past the ideas of protection toward actually protecting these streams. It's also the case that this is one of many steps that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts needs to take toward climate resiliency. Finally, for some of our communities that are both in the MWRA system and withdrawing local supplies as a registered user, we just want to reiterate our support for ensuring that these communities fall under the requirements in these regulations to protect the local streams and restrict non-essential water use during that period. So I'll return to my main point in saying we're in strong support and grateful for the EP opening up this comment period.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, Christina Jones?
Yes, good morning. This opportunity to comment. My name's Christina Jones and I'm the Deputy Director of Water Operations at Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. We represent 250,000 drinking water customers, as well as 14,000 acres of pristine watershed land that we work really hard to protect. So I'd like to touch on the impacts that these regulations have on water quality in our drinking water system and on the financial impacts, as well as the fact that these regulations completely fail to protect the environment, at least in our system. So first, water quality. So MASTEP has stated that the proposed regulations are intended to ensure quality of water, to assure public health and safety. So they have the opposite effect for us at Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. In recent years, due to changing raw water quality, we've struggled to balance our chlorine demand in the system with the development of disinfection byproducts, which are a significant public health and regulatory concern. Long term, we're working on a new water treatment plant that will hopefully allow us to resolve this issue. But in the meantime, our primary strategy to reduce DBPs in the system is to street flush our hydrants. Disinfection byproducts develop when chlorine interacts with organics in the water and water age and water stagnation have a big impact on that. And this is a seasonal problem that affects us especially in the summer. So if we're required to restrict our water during dry periods, our reservoir might be filled to the brim with no risk of pollution, we will have to dump that same water that we're conserving out into the street to keep water age down. This does not make any sense for our system and does not result in any water being conserved. Secondly, if we have to flush that water into the street, we won't be able to make revenue on that water. We estimate that the level one or two restrictions would result in lowering our customer usage by maybe 1 million gallon per day. We're currently flushing 1 million gallon per day. We'll have to increase that volume to 2 million gallons per day to keep water age down. And this could have a cost impact to us of up to $1 million if restrictions were placed all season long. So instead of sending that water to our paying customers, we would now be dumping it into the street for free, all while telling our customers that they need to conserve water. And I just, can you imagine the public confusion and resentment that this is going to cause for us? I mean, especially when we tell our low-income communities that we need to raise the rates even more each year to help cover the cost of this wasted water and of our continued renewal in our infrastructure to help us improve our climate change resiliency. So this is, this is a one-size-fits-all approach. It does not fit our system, it just doesn't work. We, we genuinely care about the environment here. I personally care about the environment and this, I'm just saying, this is just not the way to do it. We do ask DEP to withdraw these proposed regulations, which will make protecting public health more challenging, hurt us financially, and do nothing to protect the environment here. And I mean this sincerely, maintaining healthy stream flow in our streams is a good and important idea. This specific approach just does not have that result in our system, and this is not the way to do this. So we ask that these regulations be withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Tricia Price? Tricia, can you, oh, sorry, it looks like you're... Yes, Tricia, are you ready? I see your hand raised and your mute button just went off, but I'm not hearing you. All right, I'm gonna move on to Elise Tarnakis. And Tricia, we'll come back to you. And Elise, I hope I got your last name close?
Pretty close, thank you. All right, well, good morning. My name's Elise Tarnakis, I am the Process Control Analyst for Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. And I just want to thank you for this opportunity to speak this morning. I'll just have a couple additional comments to add on to what Christina said and what we've said at the previous hearing. We question the nature of the exemption provided for registrants with an accepted drought management plan. It is not clear upon what standard or scientific evidence the three-time standard is based, or does the rationale for allowing an exemption for only one system in the state? DEP's drought management plan refers to American Water Works M60 manual for drought response and planning. But this manual does not include any mention of a three-year supply of water in order to be considered drought resilient. The M60 manual states capacity is only one factor of consideration for creation of a drought plan. And that other factors should be included are seasonal inflows and interannual variability of supply storage. The DEP's three-year supply exemption does not factor in these seasonal inflows and does not appear to have any other reasoning to back it up. We, as the commission, we have our own system-specific drought management plan, and it was revised and improved in 2020. And our plan uses both historical and synthetic scenarios to help predict the next 24 months of storage. Our Cabo Mountain reservoir holds 15 to 24 months of supply without factoring any of the inflows. And it's also an inter-year reservoir, meaning that the storage carries over into the next year. And that one bad year would not lead to any failure of our systems. And while we do not meet this three-year capacity criteria, our system has shown its resilience to drought, especially in these recent drought years. For example, in 2016, which was the most recent drought record, our reservoir still had over a year's supply of storage. And I think now we are more prepared than ever to respond to droughts with our updated plan. And we have tools created to help us monitor current and even future conditions. So we'd like to ask DEP to withdraw these proposed regulations as they are a one-size-fits-all approach to managing drought conditions. And they do not take into account system-specific conditions, and they do not allow for appropriate exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise. Tricia Price, have you, I'll give you another shot? I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you. Again, we'll give you another shot in a moment. I'm gonna move on to Phil Guerin. Sorry to interrupt your drink, but Phil.
Good morning. Phil Guerin, City of Worcester, Department of Public Works and Parks, and Mass Water Works Association. So it seems that the Commonwealth and advocates are fixated on lawn watering as a meaningful step to assure available water supply during the drought. Now, that may work in some communities, but certainly not all. And our experience in Worcester demonstrates this clearly. And I suspect our, our experience would be similar to other urban areas with surface water supplies. 2016 was the worst drought we had had since the 1960s. Worcester implemented its drought management plan. We use reservoir capacity as a trigger and a stepwise approach of restricting uses with more severe limitations as conditions worsened. We started with an advisory, went to limitations on outdoor water use, and then a full ban. On September 1st, we hit 55% capacity in our reservoirs. Our goal is to keep our reservoirs above 50%. So what if we had implemented our full ban earlier, say June 1st? And what if we had achieved winter use levels in June, July, and August? It's not a reasonable assumption, but just for comparison's sake. So if we look back at 2016 numbers and we plug in winter use in June, July, and August, September 1st, we achieved 61% capacity, which is not a particularly significant change from where we actually were. That endeavor would cost us about $2 million in revenue. We would have diverted personnel away from critical functions and added costs for overtime and public education and marketing. It's a whole lot of expense to achieve very little. If we move ahead now to 2020, 2021, the Commonwealth again is, seems to be distraught about a drought. They're declaring droughts in some parts of the state when there's still snow cover. Now, a few months later, we have the wettest July on record. In Worcester, our reservoirs are 95% full April 1st, 99% full May 1st, yet we were still in a declared level-one drought for the central region. And we had 104% on June 1st, which is the highest June 1st level since 1989. Systems are unique, management assistance is best achieved through local plans, not statewide regional declarations of one-size-fits-all approaches. So I urge DEP to modify its, its drought management, to modify its regulations to allow local drought management plans to be utilized rather than reliance on one-size-fits-all. Finally, there's this repeated narrative that these regs are needed to level the playing field. And that is simply breathtaking. This may be one of the least credible statements from state officials that I can recall. You start with the false notion that registered-only systems are poor water managers who must be controlled through regulation. You manufacture criteria that allows one water system to get a pass on these regulations, that system happens to be the largest registered-only system in the state. And then you claim that these, these regulations are leveling the playing field. Don't get me wrong, I don't believe MWRA should be subject to these regulations. They have their own drought plan, and lawn watering mandates would do nothing for them anyways. But there are other systems in the state that have drought plans that are in positions where they can implement those plans and follow local circumstances. Change the regulations, allow others to use local drought triggers and local drought plans. And maybe the playing field won't be leveled, but at least be, we're all playing the same game. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Phil. For those, it looks like they've dropped their hands, so thank you. For those who have given the opportunity, please drop your hands moving forward. Next speaker is Martha Morgan.
Hi, I'm the Water Programs Director of the Nashville River Watershed Association. The NWRA is in favor of these regulations. The Nashville River Basin experienced severe low flows in most of our rivers and streams during the 2016 drought, and again in 2020. We are lucky in that the droughts did not continue for multiple years as they did in the 1960s. It may feel counterintuitive now with the excessive rain that we're getting. But the Massachusetts Climate Action Tool states that even with more precipitation predicted with climate change for the Northeast, that less frequent precipitation events are also expected, meaning more consecutive dry days or extreme dry spells. The 2018 State Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan predicts dry days will increase by 18% by the end of the century. A prolonged drought will happen at some time in the future, and it will pay to be ahead of the curve when it does. NRWA applauds the proposed DEP regulation changes to condition registrations. It only makes sense from a practical and environmental standpoint to give drought management plan traction and require conservation measures during times of drought. This is a good first step. It should be required also that registrations be regulated for severely stressed basins, as in the Ipswich, defined by DEP as groundwater and/or biological categories four and five. Standard conservation measures for these severely stressed basins should be the norm. One of NRWA's goals is to restore and protect water quality and quantity for people, fish, and wildlife. Section 3 of the Massachusetts Water Management Plan Act states that the DEP shall adopt such regulations as it deems necessary, ensuring where necessary, a balance among competing water withdrawals and uses. These proposed regulations are a small step towards ensuring this is accomplished. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Hi, Dwayne, if I may, this is Tricia. Can you hear me now?
I can, yes.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Go ahead.
First of all, Dwayne, it's been a while since we were at the Sustainable Water Management Initiative meetings. What a lot of work's been done. One thing that I want to bring to light, particularly from those conversations, is fisheries need to be included as a user of a watershore system, particularly in Waymouth, where we have one of the most productive herring runs in the Northeast. I know there were times to avoid declaring a drought. The town of Waymouth continued pumping out of the Washington Street Pump Station stranding young herring in the herring ladders. On the one hand, I'm struggling with the need for regulation to ensure water is available. But I also understand that there needs to be a way to look at things very particularly in a particular surface water system. I heard all the categorizations about golf courses and ornamentals and industrial. I feel there needs to be a specific categorization for fisheries in those basins, in those watersheds. And those might need to be regulated at the state level. Thanks for all you do, all the metrics, percentiles must be tediously maddening at times. But I suspect with all the artificial intelligence that's coming about, there will be better ways to specifically look at each town water system and best manage it per that environment. Finally, it seems that there's competing interests with metropolitan area planning commissions push for housing. In Waymouth, we've seen apartments popping up like mushrooms, and there's a number of apartments that are going through planning at a very fast-paced rate. And I would like to understand how that type of development push from the MAPC, which seems to be strong-holding local municipalities for affordable housing when inventories roll off the rolls and developers are giving another opportunity to come in with water demands, but with apartment units. So I'd like to, in conclusion, ensure that fisheries specifically are called out in those areas where there's herring runs specifically, smelt runs, eel runs, supported by the surface water systems. And they need to be counted as a very important user of those water systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Our next speaker, Pine Dubois?
Thanks very much, Dwayne. Hello, everybody. I, I, second and third, what Tricia just said, as well as what Carrie said. Our, I'm from the Jones River Watershed Association in Kingston, Mass. Our biggest registered water user is the city of Brockton. That registration was improperly issued because it allowed an inter-basin transfer that was not registered or even tracked today in, in managing the withdrawals. Every single day, even now with the Jones River theoretically at its highest day of record, we live in a drought because of the lack of stream flow from our headwater. One of the 12 largest natural lakes in Massachusetts, the EP looks at it, the city of Brockton looks at it, the town of Whitman looks at it as their reservoir. The EP looks at it as a reservoir, it doesn't look at it as the cold-water fishery that has now been declared by the Mass DFG. We need the department and the regulations to step it up. We need, we absolutely need what you're proposing. To me, that's, you know, that's a no-brainer. What Phil said is okay, but, but it doesn't relate to the fact that mandatory restrictions exist in Kingston and in Ducksbury and in Hanson and in Halifax, but not in the city of Brockton or Whitman. They're outwatering the sidewalks of Town Hall during a drought, a declared drought. What does the EP do? Nothing. What does the manager in town do? Nothing. They have their big concerns about everything else, not about the water or the fish. So we need the, the department to step it up and to step it up fast. Absolutely on the same page as Andrew Gottlieb and what Carrie said. Absolutely with the fish. If we don't do something fast, we have no fish in the Gulf of Maine. Why are you guys here? Because those explorers came to the Gulf of Maine to fish. Are we gonna bury it that way too? Because we can't get around to managing water resources. Why aren't you requiring moisture sensors in irrigation systems? Why are you going for the averages that you know don't work? Phil said it doesn't work when you Phil said it doesn't work when you average out a, a uh, water precipitation. It doesn't, it doesn't, you can't average the future. You can't. Uh, climate change is upon us. We're gonna go down the tubes if the EP doesn't step it up. And really start uh, implementing what the Water Management Act required way back when. They didn't grandfather registrations. They gave you 20 years to figure it out and now it's 35 years later and you're still dragging your feet. Please get on with it. We support the changes and we want to see more. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Pine. Um, Tricia, I, I see a comment in the chat. Does anybody else um, wanna raise their hand, say anything at this point? Okay, I got Dorothy. I'm sorry, I can't see your full, your last name. Dorothy, you have the floor. You're muted.
How many months have we been doing these meetings and um, I can't get that right. Um, my name's Dot McGlyncie, Dorothy McGlyncie with, I'm the Executive Director of Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions. MACC supports these changes. We recognize that it's difficult to balance the needs of all of the groups, but our group uh, is very concerned about the water resources, the wetlands and the balancing of, of Mother Nature with uh, all the things that we're trying to do in our towns. I'm not going to repeat what Pine said and what some of the others have said. We're going to submit written comments, but we feel that these regulations are the minimum that are needed. I think we need to look holistically. It's not just uh, for water supply, for drinking water purposes. That certainly is one of the primaries, but there's the whole ecosystem uh, interactions that we need to take into consideration. And the Water Management Act is one part of it, along with um, the other climate resiliency actions that we're taking. And we need to look holistically at this, so um, I support these, we support these regs. We'll have more details in our written comments. Thank you all for the hard work that you're doing. Thank all, I thank all of the uh, drought management folks who are looking at this and starting to really try and pull things together. So um, thank you all for your work and um, we'll talk to you uh, by the 26th with written comments.
Thank you, Dorothy. Um, okay, Mr. Sam Corder, you have the floor. Sam, you're muted or?
I'm ju- again, haven't done this a long time, still very slow at it. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Sam Corder. I work, um, I run the Cambridge Water Department for the city of Cambridge. And um, I, I guess I'd like to comment. Um, using the current mass drought management plan that was established in 2019 as a universal basis for conditioning water registrations is not an effective means of preserving or protecting our water resources. Each water system is unique. In Cambridge, and in Cambridge, this certainly held true. We are a full member of the MWRA for both water and wastewater. And we are unique in the sense that we have a redundant system, you know, in, in the metropolitan area, which most do not have. Our water reservoir system is small, but very resilient and the overly sensitive mass drought management plan could have a negative impact on our system. As an example, during the first year after implementation uh, in 2020, the masterout management plan, there were several months of declared drought where the Cambridge water system was well, well within its 10 year averages. Even though the drought declarations in 20, even with the drought declarations in 2020, the Cambridge system reached its full capacity in May of this year. Um, you know, typically, uh, our system is small and it can, and it can really recover and very quickly. Um, that is well before the, and didn't include the June and early July precipitation that we're currently having. And we currently, as a result of all that precipitation, we are spilling into the Charles River to maintain safe operating levels in our reservoirs. Additionally, the Cambridge water, the city of Cambridge operates three surface reservoirs. The water supply reservoirs provide um, the city's daily demand. In the summer and fall, dam releases from the Cambridge reservoir into Waltham travels about three miles um, to via Hobbs and Stony Brooks to the Stony Brook reservoir. And the, on the western Waltham town boundaries. From the Stony Brook reservoir, water is piped to Fresh Pond through a conduit. Um, for Cambridge, the demand reduction during these times of drought could actually reduce the stream flows and create a, a problem for that. You know, or have a negative impact on the environment. Um, with the drought of 2016, I'll call it, the Cambridge water depend, the, the water department enhanced, significantly enhanced all of our water conservation strategies. Um, and it's a never ending process these days. Um, we use social media, webpages and so on and so forth, mailing, stuffers, et cetera. And it's been very effective at maintaining and are reducing uh, our water demand with an increasing population in the city of Cambridge. It also in 2015, you really pride all the stuff. We initiated installing all smart irrigation controls for all the municipal entities. And, and again, that may be the larger use. In Cambridge, obviously, there's not a lot of playing fields and so on. And so we um, installed all kinds of controls such that we can minimize the irrigation to maintain all those fields. And really, a really good example of, of that is our demand, historical finished water from uh, for the city of Cambridge. If we, if you take an example, in 1970, our demand was 24 million gallons a day. In the 2020, our demand is 12 million gallons a day. So all on our own, we've been able to you know, control and reduce our um, water usage on our daily usage, um, again, to 12 million gallons a day. And just as an example, from 2010 to 2019, our population increased from 105 to 120,000 people. And another important example is a residential gallon per day per capita is 45 gallons per day per person in Cambridge, again significantly lower than most communities. Um, and in conclusion, I think water registrations should not be conditioned under any circumstances. And, and at, at the least, if the proposed regulations must move forward, Cambridge and many other water systems would be much better served by having the ability to implement their own drought management plan that was approved by the state. Because again, every system is unique and every system has its own specifics that would require. And that would be way more effective at dealing with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, um, I don't see any hands raised. Um, give everyone another opportunity if you would like to say something. You're welcome to put in the chat or raise your hand, but otherwise I, I don't see any hands raised. Beth Lynn June, anyone else you see? Um, okay, um, give it a minute. If everyone's good, I think we will um, close this hearing.
Yeah, Duane, this is Tricia Prize. One more thing, I, I put some comments in the chat. How do we um, get agencies to work together to solve this problem? It seems we have all of these agencies and all this regulation, but we still get into a position where fish are stranded in herring ladders. Um, it seems it's the space between these agencies that need to be coordinated. As an example, the MAPC push for housing in Waymouth because of the 40B inventory, if I get these, this verbiage correctly. And to find out that these inventories roll off. So a developer comes in, they put in an apartment complex after a certain amount of time. Those affordable housing units are no longer considered, well, no longer considered valid in the inventory count. And it seems until we start looking at things like um, development standards such as impervious pavements. Understanding why affordable housing inventory rolls off. Um, why, I know there's a, I know bit, it's a delicate balance between revenue to municipalities and, and water resources. But to say something like um, golf courses and ornamentals for pictures get discussed in a presentation instead of fisheries confuses me tremendously. Um, so how do we work together with agencies like the MAPC, like Division of Marine Fisheries? And local municipalities that have a governing structure that says one person in the town rules regardless of anything else. As in Waymouth, at the complete disregard for national he- natural heritage. And, and how do we start that effort so that there's consistency and continuity with this vision of providing an environment for people to live in, providing water and maintaining the natural heritage that is so important to our food chain and, and, and the, the greater Atlantic marine fisheries. It seems adding more of these statistics and measures and, and whatnot, it's not helpful until you get that coordination in these state agencies. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Tricia. Um, I'm happy to talk to you offline about some of your questions. I mean, um, you're talking about multiple agencies, so I, I can speak to what I know about our agency um, in our program. So uh, you're more than welcome to give me a call and we can talk about some of that. Um, Mary Parsons, you have your hands raised?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I agree with Pine Dubois and everything she said about Brockton. Nothing, nothing is done about Brockton. Drawing down on the ponds, even though they're attached to the um, DeSalle plant. They just seem to think it's their personal um, drinking water supply and everyone else, it's tough luck. And I agree with Trish too about the building that goes on because no one, mass housing does not take a look at whether or not the infrastructure in the region can support it. We're trying to protect our zone A water around our water supply, our surface water supply. But we have a developer that wants to develop the whole thing and he is, he is doing everything under the sun to try to get his way. You need to look at what can be supported by these towns water wise. Otherwise, it's gonna be a permanent drought. Year round. And you've seen the pitches I take of Waymouth's water supply. This is what happens in the summer, yet they never put a ban on. That's my comment. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mary. Okay, um, I, lacking a, anyone else raising their hand, we're gonna close this uh, hearing. I remind you all, Ju- July 26th is the close of the comment period, so please get in your comments by that period. We put in the chat, if you have any questions about how to do that, you're more than welcome to call me. At 617-292-5706. And otherwise, I thank you for your time and your interest in this matter. So thank you. And with that, we're gonna close the hearing.